Okay, well, today I had planned this to discuss the budget. And also, I wanted to discuss our proposed mission statement that was approved by the college council and get any feedback from the audience regarding our mission statement. Because according to accreditation standards, it's appropriate for the college to review their mission statement periodically, annually, or every two years so that they can make sure they're on target with their goals and mission. So, the accreditation team has reviewed it and made some recommendations, and it went to the college council. But let me give you an update on the budget. I think you're all curious as to what this means for us in fiscal year 1213, which starts July 1. As you know, the state of California did not have a $9 billion deficit, but a $16 billion deficit. So what was proposed in January as tax receipts and income did not come through. Now, they're saying it may be even additional billion that was not accounted for. So it is a bigger gap to cover. And the governor is hoping that the November tax initiative is passed, which would then bring about $8 billion to the table, and primarily will be used to offset any further reductions for schools and community colleges in higher education. So that November tax initiative, which is a sales tax quarter cent and an income tax for those who make above $250,000, an adjustment in the income tax will then bring us revenue necessary to generate $8 to $9 billion that can be used for schools and colleges. So that November initiative is extremely important, and we are hoping and working very hard to make sure that happens. Now, the budget for Los Angeles Community College District and all the nine colleges has to be prepared and adopted for initial approval by the June 23 board meeting by the Board of Trustees. This is the budget for July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013. We have been directed and required and mandated by the district to basically do the worst-case scenario. And the worst-case scenario means looking at a 7% reduction in 1213. Now, we've already gone through a 6% plus a 1.52% in 1112. So we've been through a 7.92 or 7.52% reduction this past year. 1.52 of that reduction, we didn't pay for, it was paid for by the district, but now we have to absorb it in 1213. So, in essence, within a two-year period, we've gone 13% reduction. So if you take $26 million, and now another reduction, we're looking at 22.9 that we have to work with. 26 million to 22.9, it's about a $3 million, almost, you know, that amount of money. We've been asked to reduce that by 1.5 million, so we've had to look for reductions of 1.5 in the worst-case scenario budget. And so here are the priorities. We have to protect the base for full-time equivalent students so that when times get a little better and we can recover, we can build up again our enrollments. So that's number one. But number two is we have to protect all personnel full-time, both classified and faculty, because those are collective bargaining agreements, and we have to protect our personnel. Our personnel of our budget is about almost 94% of our entire budgets on personnel. And then, the only place we can work with to do any kind of reductions has to do with hourly, hourly counselors, hourly librarians, hourly tutors, hourly faculty if we reduce classes, and also supplies, and also other expenditures with regard to operations, like relief workers and substitutes when you close your office and you need a substitute to keep your office open. So the office, like for instance, business services, if the person goes to lunch and there's no somebody to back up that person, we have to close business services down for that period of time. Same thing with admissions and records. If the admissions and record people, they're sick, there's nobody to come in and take that place, we've got to close that office down during that period of time if there's no one available. So all nine colleges is looking at, they're looking at this scenario, and all of them have come to the same conclusion. This is indeed the worst-case scenario because it really, really impacts operations and academics and services, critical services for students. So we are all looking at reducing tutorials significantly, general fund tutorial, I'm not talking about special projects, specially funded programs. We have some, and that's helpful, but all general fund tutors, significantly reducing that, significantly reducing library assistance in your hourly, reducing relief workers for admissions and records and business. These are the kinds of things we can do as a college without touching personnel. Personnel cannot be touched by us, it's touched by the district. At this point, the district and the board has decided not to touch that area of personnel. So there are no decisions being made at this point around, or discussions around, full-time faculty and full-time classified administrators about what to do with that group, those groups of people. So, we're looking at meeting our base next year, the full-time equivalent target. In addition to that, at the same time, the district has approved, and the board did approve, to continue our full-time obligation number for full-time faculty. We lost 80 faculty this past year since, with retirements and otherwise. In order to keep our percent of full-time obligated number, which is 62%, district-wide, we need to hire an additional 50 to 60 faculty by September 1. So the district's decided to support that effort by giving each college some funding to move us in that direction. We're obligated at LA Mission to hire six faculty. So those six faculty are on the prioritization list, and we're moving forward with those six faculty members. Sociology, geography, child development, biology, transfer, counselor, I think those are off the top of my head.
Chemistry.
Chemistry. Chemistry. Chemistry. Can't forget chemistry. I said biology. Biology, chemistry, sociology, geography, transfer director, and child development. We're on a fast track because if we don't get those names in by September 1, we will not get the district's support of $35,000 the first year, $25,000 the second year, and $15 the third year. So I'm really pushing everybody really hard to get that done this week so we can post it no later than Monday. Because whoever gets in the front door first gets the district's support. So, we really need to move forward with those committees and to get that done. So getting back to the budget, so where this leaves us is in a difficult situation this summer, but it's the first iteration in June. The final budget really isn't approved till September. Now, something could happen between June and September. I don't know what that something is, but it could be a positive, and we could get some relief and restoration of the projected reductions that we're being asked to do. Of course, November comes, and we pass the initiative, we're going to be able to recover and sustain ourselves at an adequate level for that end of the fiscal year. If we do not get the tax initiative, then we're looking at some even more critical issues in the spring. There are some options that the board can look at. There are such things as reserves, contingency reserve, general reserve, there are such things as ending balances of each of the college that could be used. So there are some things that could be done by the board if they so desire to try to see us through this period of time. And again, that's up to the board, and that could happen from now to September. So, it's important that we work together on the tax initiative and that we tell our story. I certainly am telling the story. The college council directed me to fight, to tell our story to the board and to the chancellor, that we cannot survive any more additional cuts because of our enrollments and our academics being hampered and our critical services being severely hampered in terms of counseling and library and tutors. How can you have student success if you don't have tutors? How can you have student success if you don't have adjunct counselors to provide counseling? How can you have student success if libraries have to close at night? You can't have it. So you need, in fact, to preserve that aspect of the budget. So that's the message I'm giving, that's the message I'm taking, and I'm, you know, need your assistance in that as well. Okay, so any questions regarding the budget? And if you do, Terry, you want them to come to the microphone so you can record it? So are there any questions about the budget? Angela?
Yeah, I want to ask, what are you going to do to make sure that the integrity of the academic programs and the voice of the faculty is heard when these cuts, with cut decisions are made? Because, you know, next week is finals week, or finals week is coming up, faculty are going to be gone, and I'm afraid, a lot of us are afraid, that we're going to come back in late August with some very unpleasant summer surprises.
Good question. Thank you for asking that. I would like very much to have ongoing meetings this summer with the faculty leadership, the senate leadership, and the AFT leadership. I do have what we call the joint consultation meetings of all the leadership constituency groups on campus. I understand, I'm happy the college council is meeting in June and July, so I will, in shared governance, provide that information. I don't want to make a decision of any sort without conferring with the leadership of the campus. So as soon as I hear a direction from the district or the chancellor regarding budget, I will communicate it to the leadership, and then we can meet. So I will be meeting this summer with you. Other questions on the budget? I might add that we're working very hard, it's kind of interesting, we're talking about the operations budget of the college. In the meantime, we're working very hard this summer on the capital aspect of the budget, which is the bond, and the Center for Math and Science, I don't know if I said that right in terms of its official name, but the Center for Math and Science will be opening this fall. And we're going to start moving people in June. So yes, faculty, I know you're going away for the summer, but for those science and math faculty, you may have to come back and make sure your stuff is getting, gets moved, and you've labeled it, and you're moving into your new beautiful location. That's going to happen this summer. We're gearing up, so we're going to open classes for the fall at the Center for Math and Science. And so we're still working on those details, but we're moving forward with that. We're moving forward with proposing the central energy plant to get that built so we can conserve energy and have a lower utility bill for the entire college. So we're doing all of that important work right now. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that's moving forward, and I guess you've seen the workers in media arts. So that's going forward, and we're, have our fingers crossed, the next nine months, we're going to get to a place where we're going to celebrate the opening of that building. Okay, any other questions on the budget? I will keep you informed, I will notify you, I'll take the liberty of giving you LAAMC all kind of emails and kind of keeping you abreast of the developments with the budget, and hopefully I'll have some good news for you toward the end of the summer that would be helpful. The other thing I wanted to talk about was our mission statement. Our current mission statement is above, I don't know if you all can read this, so I'll quickly take the liberty and read it to you. "The mission of Los Angeles Mission College is the success of our students. To facilitate their success, LA Mission College provides accessible, affordable, high-quality learning opportunities in a culturally and intellectually supportive environment by encouraging students to become critical thinkers and lifelong learners, ensuring that students successfully transfer to four-year institutions, find meaningful employment, improve their basic skills, and enrich their lives through continuing community education and providing services and programs that improve the life of its immediate community." The revised one proposed and approved by the college council for my recommendation to me reads, "LA Mission College is committed to the success of our students," and is committed as new. "The college provides accessible, affordable, high-quality learning opportunities in a culturally, intellectually supportive environment which ensures that students successfully transfer to four-year institutions, prepare for successful careers in the workplace, and improve their basic skills, encourages students to become critical thinkers and lifelong learners, and provides services and programs that improve the lives of the diverse communities we serve." So the new aspects have to do with committed, preparing for successful careers in the workplace, and diverse communities we serve. And part of the, is that we got to talk in our mission statement about who is it, who's our target groups, who are we serving as part of the requirements of the accreditation agency. So I'm open to any questions or comments regarding the proposed mission statement? If there's any comments regarding that. Yes, if you can come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Randy Gámez. I am the executive administrator of the ASO here at LA Mission College. And we, as a student body, we have been looking at this proposed change, in particular the part where it says diverse communities we serve. We have a problem with this because this college is made up of 71% Latino students. This community is made up of approximately over 85% Latinos. And we feel that this is a direct attack against the direct community, this immediate community, that there is an attempt to marginalize the community that this college is supposed to serve. We feel that it's a racist attack against us because we live in this community, we will continue to live in this community for the next 30, 40, 50, 100 years from now, and our children are going to be coming to this college. We do not appreciate that there will be a change from a college serving this immediate community to trying to serve a diverse community. Now, while it sounds rational to say, well, we serve a diverse community, what is the diversity? What is the ethnic demographics of this college, of the community that you are serving? Why are you trying to change something that has been serving, you know, that is basically a college that is intended to serve its immediate community? Every single college that is planted somewhere, you go to Valley College, you go to Pierce College, you go to any college within the district, they all serve their immediate communities, and we do not appreciate the fact that they are trying to change our mission from serving Pacoima, Silmar, San Fernando, and this immediate community which is made up of this large population of Latinos, to trying to change it to reflect something different. So, as a student body, we are adamantly opposed to that particular part of the mission statement. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that the zip codes that we serve, the top 50%, come from, number one being Silmar, number two being Pacoima, number three being San Fernando, four Alita, five Lake Terrace, Granada Hills, and then it goes on from there, the other 50% from a variety of different areas. But the top numbers do come from those zip codes of Silmar, San Fernando, Pacoima, that makes up almost 50%. So that's number one. So it's like, I don't see, if you went to the high school senior day last Friday, we will continue to serve those high schools, and the vast majority of those students are Latino students. So I'm not sure that that would change. However, I appreciate that comment, and I'd be happy to meet with the ASO regarding that to discuss that further. Are there other ideas, any comments regarding the mission statement? Okay, well, I want to say I did meet with Michael and his cabinet, the new cabinet of the Associated Students, I'm encouraged by that conversation. We're going to have a lot of open meetings, I see Michael back there, so we'll be exchanging quite a bit with ASO. Anyone else? Yes, Angela?
The change is meant to be inclusive, not exclusive. One of the reasons why we examined this and thought it was a better statement was because we are changing, we just had a substantive change, and we're doing a lot of more distance education, so we're having, we're increasing the number of students throughout the world who are taking classes here. So it's not meant to exclude anyone or be racist, it's simply to make a statement that we do serve a diverse community of students.
Okay, I have a questionnaire, Maria Fanyas.
Well, actually, I agree with both speakers, and I do agree that immediate community is rather exclusive, and it's not inclusive. I really don't think the immediate has a place there, and I agree it should be gone. Now, replacing it with diverse, that's another issue. Anyone who lives in the Los Angeles area knows that our population is diverse all over. I don't think that that's necessary to point that out. It is implied. We have a diverse student population. We serve the communities. I don't believe it's necessary to put diverse, but I agree that the immediate should be removed. It would read perfectly well, "provide services and programs that improve the lives of the communities we serve." It's obvious that the community is diverse, and it doesn't have to be immediate, after all, if somebody comes to us from downtown Los Angeles, we won't refuse a student. Immediate has no place there, it has to go. I agree on that with Angela. The diverse, it's unnecessary, it's redundant.
Thank you, thank you. Another speaker, okay, come on up, please, your name?
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Catano, I'm the ASO Senator of Administrations here at Mission College. The fact that we want to change it from immediate to diverse communities we serve, to my understanding, when we went to the academic senate meeting, they want to change it so that it includes online students and ITV students. ITV is actually, they just hold a place here at our school, it's not actually our program. And for online students, the online students is a very small population, to change it from immediate to diverse, you know, we know in our community that we are a diverse community, we serve, you know, the people that are here, that's what a community college is here for, to serve our immediate community. You know, if they want to change it to diverse community and make us as a students feel like they're trying to push us out of our own community, that creates a problem. We shouldn't be like, we're feeling, we shouldn't feel like we're being pushed out of our own community. The fact that it says immediate community lets us know that we are here to serve San Fernando, Silmar, Pacoima, Van Nuys, and other surrounding areas. It took Mission College a very long time to be put here because nobody thought that we were going to succeed. And we're here, and we're succeeding. To change it from immediate community changes the struggle of all of these people, Ms. Wala Luperamiris, of everybody else that struggled to put this campus here to serve our immediate community so that we can succeed. For them to go around and chase it, change it to a diverse community is a slap in the face to us students and to the people that fought for this community college to be here.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? You all agree then, prepare for successful careers in the workplace seems to be a good thing. The only one is controversial, or difference of opinion has to do with the community. So I want to keep working on this with the college council, and I want to have a meeting with ASO and further discuss this. I think we can come up with a solution rather quickly, it doesn't have to take a long time. So I think that would be good. I think that with the budget, with our mission statement, and moving forward during the summer, I know you're all getting close to finals, we have commencement coming. We do have some very good things happening this summer. We have indeed the STEM boot camp, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math Boot Camp, that will be happening this summer. There's going to be a science writing classes that Luis Barbato's group or faculty are going to do. And I don't know if you've all met our STEM director, she's here in the audience, Dr. Parvina Mohammedine, thank you. Good to see you, good to see you. So she'll be taking over June 1, the STEM program, and helping us move that forward. I want to thank all the hard work of the STEM faculty this past nine months, it's been a terrific work. So, you know, sometimes we focus on sort of the uneasy things going on, the difficulties a college has with regard to leadership, with regard to focusing on how we work together. But when you look at the work in terms of what's going on with accreditation, what's going on with the STEM project, what's going on with the teaching and learning, we are accomplishing a great deal. We keep getting lots of accolades from people about our students. And I want to tell you, when I went to UCLA last week for a meeting with the UCLA outreach programs and the faculty, they keep saying how well-prepared LA Mission College students are at UCLA. They said, "You guys are doing tremendously good work. It makes me proud to represent you," and I can tell our story to the four-year. Cal State Northridge, same thing, had a meeting with them, with our faculty, they are very happy to work with us. So it's all there, and there are people coming, knocking on our doors to open up careers for our students. Most recently, a private entrepreneur, Mr. Velasi, wants to start a light technology program here, the only one of its kind in all of this region, which is to create and design light technology manufacturing materials, like cars, toothbrushes, it's composite, it's lighter than steel, you save on energy, we'd be the only college that can develop that. He's willing to put his resources into Mission College because he lives in the area, he wants us to succeed, and there'll be a lot of jobs in that area. That's just one example, there are a number of these examples. Culinary Arts, last week, we had the Los Angeles Unified School District competition. It was wonderful to see it, the C cap is what they call themselves. And Mr. Grossman, who is a multimillionaire from New York, came to officiate, he wants to partner with Culinary Arts. How can we work together to promote your culinary arts program and your graduates? So Louis, you did a great job, Sonny Licini and hosting them. So it's, again, another example. We just had a meeting with Cesar Chavez Learning Academies last week, Angela attended, Susan, a number of our faculty attended that meeting from Theater Arts, Art, Deborah Paulson, Guillermo was there. Then we had STEM with Young and others, and Angela and so forth, and we talked, it's, these are charter high schools under LA Unified focused on science, focused on arts, focused on social justice. focused on social justice and social sciences, and want to teach a prep. And already, we're talking about working together, and they're willing to put some money in the pot. And Deborah Paulson indicated that the Theater Arts people, Artest is the name of their high school, are willing to pay for a class that we would offer there for our students and their students. I think a stagecraft class is what you're working on. This is the kind of stuff we're doing as colleges. You should be proud of what you're doing. You should focus on that, because that is what we're making a difference. The rest of the stuff we can address, and we will address, as a community. So I'm very proud to be part of this, and very proud to move you forward to the next academic year, where we're even going to do more fantastic, fantastic things. We're looking at a partnership with Maximus, which is a national corporation, to give tax credits to our graduate for employers who employ our students. So when our students graduate or want to get employment, they'll have a certificate to an employer, and the employer will get a tax credit for hiring our students. And Maximus, the company, will do all the paperwork. Nobody's doing that. But Mission is going to do that, to give our students a leg up so they can get those jobs, to help our local communities get tax credits. That's the kind of stuff we're doing. I'm proud to say that our Citizen Oversight Committee asked one simple question: How many local people are employed by the contractors here building these buildings? Because we do have a project labor agreement with the union's endorsement that 30% of all hires have to come from project labor agreement from local communities. So we have six zip codes, talking about Silmar, San Fernando, Pacoima, Alita, those zip codes. After 5,000 employees funded by the district, and then we looked at employees here, zero came from those zip codes. And yet, we have journeymen. We have apprenticeships from those zip codes that are part of the union. So guess what? Because of that question, we now were able to send 15. Three graduated from the boot camp. Three graduated from the boot camp are now into the apprenticeship program. They'll be able to be hired here and work here. One is already working here. This is the kind of thing Mission College needs to do. We need to employ our community so they can pay taxes and send their children here or go to school. That's another thing we're doing here at Mission. So these are the kind of things that go on that Mission is responsible for, and I think you need to pat yourself on the back. So I, thank you. Need I go on? I think it's been a really good year. There's a lot we have to do. There's a lot we have to take care of. Are there any more comments or questions on the budget? On how do we move forward? Okay. So we have commencement coming, and you have finals. And, oh, we are moving quickly. I already said that. But we are going to hire six new faculty, and we're going to move very quickly on that to get that in the, over the summer. And again, that kind of addresses Angela's question. We will need faculty who are on those committees to commit during that period of time for interviews of faculty members that have, or faculty individuals that are applying for those positions. We also are going to post the Vice President of Academic Affairs position, which will be posted by tomorrow. And also, we're posting the Dean of Institutional Effectiveness, which I've worked out finally the details on. I understand now what the issue is with regard to posting that position. So we'll probably get that posted on Monday. So we're moving forward with that. We still have a lot of accreditation work to do this summer. We have to write, finish the drafts. We have student learning outcomes. All of you faculty, please post your student learning outcomes for the spring. Right, Pat? Okay, so we need to do that. So we keep doing this hard work, but we're getting there. We're getting there. We're really a leader in this kind of stuff. Danny, he's not here now, just informed me that we're going to take leadership for the district on Medicaid, Medicare reimbursements for our students. There are students who qualify for those reimbursements because of income level that will reimburse the college services in our health services. So, you know, there's so many things that we're opening doors to and being creative to try to bring more dollars to the campus. Now, this summer, folks, we do have a summer, we're not having a summer session. We're going to have the STEM program and a couple basic skills classes going on. We may have a high school program that wants to rent our facilities at top value, by the way. Danny's a very hard negotiator of our rooms. So we're going to do that. But we are going on a four-day week schedule for those that want to take advantage of that, 4-10. So Fridays, we're closing down buildings, except for the Health Fitness Athletic Complex. That one's going to be open. John, you'll have a place on Fridays if you want to come. Or I'll take you over your office. But we will be, those that don't want to take advantage of the 4-10 on the Friday, they can go to, we'll have a way for you to work at Health Fitness Athletic Complex on the east campus. So that's going to happen this summer for a period of time. We're closing these buildings because we want to save you on utilities. There's no need to be running all of that for a skeleton group of people. But a lot could get done this summer, all the faculty hires, all of the getting ready for the fall. The custodians actually are really happy. I know Wally's group is happy because you'll have Fridays where you can, nobody's going to be around. You can do your thing and catch up. There's always a lot of catch-up to do. So that's going to be helpful. I have to tell you that we have, interesting enough, it's kind of crazy. You know, you have the general fund, and you're trying to support and save athletics and make sure athletics continues with whatever way we can do that. And then the other hand, we're still negotiating without Carrizo Park, and they're interested in having us take over the baseball diamond and use our parking structure. And so those have been kind of positive discussions. And Steve Rice, I have to give him credit for, he got beat up the first meeting, I think, a month ago. John, you were there, and so you got beat up too. But when I went to that meeting last week, that's the one that Supervisor was there, at El Carrizo Advisory Committee, I was surprised to see the support. We have the Silmar Neighborhood Council. They like, they want us to have part of that park and do athletics. They were supportive. And even Zev said, "How did you do that?" I don't, I think they finally got it. And we've got some people on the Silmar Neighborhood Council who really like us, like Don Neal and others. But it was nice to hear that. It was nice to hear that, more of a welcoming from our immediate neighborhood. That was good to hear. So that's moving rather positively. Yes, Angela, you have a question?
I have one more question. The math and science building is opening up in the fall, and that's a lot of square, extra square footage. Are we hiring any additional custodians?
Thank you, Angela. Yes, it appears the district budget committee recommended to the chancellor to take to the board the decision to provide funding from the central account, if you will. You know, we get a pot of money that comes from the state of California to the district, then the district distributes the money based on full-time equivalent. But the district budget committee recommended that we take a piece of that for maintenance and operations and for administrative overhead that's required under accreditation standards. They based the allocation on square footage. So based on square footage, usually in a national model, they came up with a number to have an average, one through five system with three being average, an average complement of custodians and trades. And that should be approved by June 23rd for July 1, Wally. I know we got our fingers crossed, but it looks like it will be approved. The finance audit committee of the board discussed it at the last finance audit meeting at LA Southwest two weeks ago. It's moving forward. If that happens, we'll get six custodians, I think five and one trade, I don't know, however you guys decide to do that, to help us with this new square footage, because we are getting, you're right, with the new Center for Science and Math and Media Arts coming online, we are indeed going to have more square footage. And so, yes, the answer is there will be funding to address that. On top of that, the district has asked each college to do a space inventory and to see how much square footage, where you were here and where you're going to be, based on the build-out. And fortunately, temporary bungalows are just that, temporary. So they don't go into your space inventory. So after doing a very strong analysis, and I just saw it today, in terms of where we were and where we're going, and how much square footage we actually will have, it appears we're only going to be about 9,000 square feet over, even with the Student Services Building. Because remember, the athletic complex was about 30,000 square feet. That's changed because you're not going to do all that build-out originally planned. And all these bungalows are going to be gone because Math and Science Center is opening. All the math-science people won't need them. And we have plenty of room for the community education and all that that may be left. So in actuality, we're getting rid of, and we're bringing it on. So it's not as bad as we thought. That helps us to get a discussion on the moratorium with regard to Student Services, if, you know, moving that forward. So we will have more custodians. It's never enough. We'd like to be at the five range. The only college that had a five was East LA on one category. Most of us were at the three and four. So we're not the dirtiest campus. We're average. And we're doing pretty good for, I mean, let's face it, Wally and the crew, you guys are really, really shorthanded. So let's give them a hand. They work hard. They work very hard. Yes. Well, is that out of their class? The question is, will the six new faculty maintain the new building, the science and math? We will have a celebr, no, no. Wally will be in charge of that, his crew, Julius. We will have a celebration of the new building. We're looking at some dates. We're looking at the end of September, or prob, no, probably October. On a Thursday, I think, is what Darlene, that's kind of what's been discussed. And I heard of an idea yesterday, and I kind of broached it with the facilities, CPM and group, an hour ago, Young and PAR. And that is, one of the things STEM needs to do is to have a high school outreach activity event where we bring high school students from the areas we serve to look at exhibits and look at our new science center and meet our faculty. So we're thinking maybe we can combine the opening of the building with the high school outreach at the same time. And the feedback I got is, it's a good idea. So we'll keep working on that. But it would, because we're going to have exhibits anyway, we're going to have a lot of celebrations, so it'd be good for the students to see that. So we are looking about doing some kind of joint project, but we're going to celebrate that probably the first Thursday or second Thursday of October. So that's going to be a great celebration. How many have seen the building inside? Angela has. Deputy Lopez has. I haven't. The day I was supposed to go, I don't know what happened, the usual. I got called off to something. But I hear it is phenomenal. It's beautiful. So I'm looking forward to the opening. Yes, looking forward to that. Let's see, any other questions? Yes, Deborah? Here, you can use this one.
I just wanted to announce, there's an exhibit tonight. There's a painting show from 5:00 to 7:00 in the basement of the LRC featuring Barbara Curran's class. Please come. Everyone's invited.
Okay, Barbara Curran's exhibit tonight. Very good. Thank you, thank you. I was excited to hear that we're talking to the Cesar Chavez Learning Academies and the art, theater, and so forth. So this is all good. And we need to, in my own heart, and continue to fight for art and for athletics and for those areas. Students need a pathway to success. So the Achieving the Dream is moving forward with the hard work of Bob Smazenka, and Young assisted him a little bit, Luis Barbato, and Diana Bonilla and Student Services. We have a proposal for interventions this fall. And I sent it to the Core and Data Team yesterday for your review. And basically, we're going to try some very interesting interventions this fall. It will start in the summertime with a STEM Boot Camp, and we're going to try out some things. And not only do I have to advocate that we get more money here, but now I have to advocate the district to change their policies on assessment, which we need to do. But the math idea is amazing. They're going to give them the math assessment where the students are not doing well. They're going to remediate during the summer, and then they want to give them the assessment again so they can get placed at a higher level in math. Similar to, I think, what English wants to do, same kind of notion, because sometimes our students get placed too low. You know, I mean, when's the last time, especially us older ones, can remember math, right? So we need refresher courses or refresher workshops. So we're going to do that. And we're going to try to do cohort or companion classes, English 28, English 101. Math wants to do 115 and 125. So if you take 115, you're ready for 125 immediately. I don't know if I can get this done, but the idea, Alma, is to try to make sure our students who go through this, 115, can go through 125 as an incentive, you know? And then, I don't know if Janice is here, but we want child development involved with the math courses. I think that's what, so I need to talk to Janice how we're going to do that with the ATD, but Achieving the Dream. But I think that there's some good, it's a good start, and it'll be research, data-driven. And then Student Services wants to do orientation, expanded orientation, and do PD, Personal Development, 40 classes in combination with English and math. So I think it's going to be an interesting time to see what's going to work for our students so they succeed at a greater level. And again, how can you do all that with a limited budget? Oh my God. So there's so much we've got to do to move the budget forward to support that. Other questions? We have a commencement speaker. We originally invited the mayor, but he was busy. Maybe he's going to go to Washington DC, who knows, to work for the re-elected Obama, if Obama gets re-elected. That's sort of the rumor. But he couldn't make it. So we have a gentleman named David Rodriguez. He's Deputy Assistant Secretary of Latin American Affairs in Washington DC. He's a Mission graduate. So his story will be a good story of, you know, achieve your dream, move forward. I'm a Mission graduate, but now I work for Hillary Rodham Clinton, Secretary, Ambassador, that all, it's all good. So he's our commencement speaker. David Rodriguez. And then we're going to have two trustees here. So we'll have to watch our Ps and Qs. Our two trustees are going to be Steve Vettis and Scott Sofkin are coming. And I had to get a special call to make sure Scott can sit in the front. I said, "Yes, of course. All trustees sit in the front." So as many as you want to sit. I had a question here. Another question? Any other questions? Any other questions? Yes? Student fees are going up to $46 a unit starting this summer. And unfortunately, there's a really, and I don't know if the students know this, but there's a misinterpretation of these fees. Even though the fee goes up, we don't get that money, really. We get about 1% of the 10 bucks that, you know, went from 36 to 46 by the time it finally gets to mission. It goes to the state, then the state allocates it according to their apportionment formula on enrollments. So often the community thinks, "Oh, you're raising $10, why can't you afford more?" But for community colleges, it doesn't work that way. We're not a straight relationship like Cal State or UC. They can raise their tuition, and then they can count on those dollars to offset any deficits. We're not that way. And so unfortunately, it doesn't work out that way. I wish we could keep all that. So any other questions? Okay, well, I want to thank you all for coming to this, and we will again have this. I'll be talking to each of you about any concerns or ideas you have. I'll be meeting with individuals regarding the mission statement and move that forward. Have a great final, students. Study, study, study. And faculty, thank you so much for your hard work. We'll have a great summer. Thank you so much.